Nick, this is Tito. Welcome. I went ahead and started the meeting just now.
All right. Sorry about that. Somehow my account password got changed.
No problem. You're right on time.
Perfect. All right. We're ready to go.
Yes.
All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the July meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran and I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. And tonight we'll do roll call right now and see if we have enough for a quorum. So first item on our agenda is roll call. Mario de Foveo.
Here.
Paul O'Brien.
Surprisingly enough, I'm here.
All right. Joe D'Angelo.
Here.
Chris Judge. All right. Chris said he wasn't going to be able to make it. Kelly Weiss.
She also couldn't make it.
Okay. And Manny Priest.
That he would make it, but obviously has not yet.
It's like Manny's not here yet, but.
It says down in the chat that he is here.
No.
We just can't hear him evidently.
All right, Manny's Manny's working on some technical difficulties. We'll update the attendance when he fully joins, but I'm here. So that does make four members, which constitute a quorum for now. And so we can proceed with our meeting. All right. Next item on our agenda are the approval of previous meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions or comments about the meetings that were posted on Basecamp? And then if there were no questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. This is.
All right. Motion by Joe.
I'll second.
All right. Seconded by Manny and we'll use this as our time to say that Manny has fully logged in. So we have five members come present tonight. All right. Seconded for the meeting minutes approval by Manny. All in favor? Just say yes if you're in favor.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Anyone opposed to the meeting minutes approval? All right. Based on the silence, we'll say that's a five in favor, zero opposed for meeting minutes approval. All right. Onto the second or next item on our agenda. So this is for seeker determinations. All right. In this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. And after all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all our applicants that will be presenting tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for our records before beginning the presentation. And we ask that any member of the team applicant's team that will be speaking, please give their name and address for our public record. All right. Just a little bit of housekeeping before we get right into the first applicant. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with chapter one of the laws of the 2020, 2022, which in part authorizes this public body quote, "to meet and take such action authorized by law without permitting in public in-person access to meetings, and authorize such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceeding. And as such, meetings are recorded and later transcribed. This act shall expire and be deemed repealed upon the expiration or termination of the state disaster declared pursuant to executive order 11 of 2021 and any extension or modification thereof." All right. So tonight to listen to the meeting audio via phone, you can call nine two nine two oh five six zero nine nine. And then tonight to speak during the public hearing, which will come later, commenters may call the planning department at six oh seven 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 two seven zero two eight to make any public comments in our public hearings portion of the project, which will be coming up next. But for now, this is secret determinations. So our first applicant is Marchuska Brothers Construction LLC. The project address is forty-nine Court Street. And this is a site plan review to add nine additional parking spaces to an existing two hundred and thirty-one space surface parking lot in the C two downtown business district. All right. Anybody on for Marchuska Brothers Construction?
Yes, we are. Austin Marchuska, thirty-three Thistlewood, five Binghamton. James.
James Carromore, twenty-seven twenty-two King Street in Nanticoa.
All right. What are you guys thinking about doing?
We're on. We currently are seeing a increase in in parking needs with ramp no longer in service on Water Street with with the metro center and simply for basically for the students, for the people who go downtown. We're looking to add nine additional parking spots. We feel good for the church too. We currently allow church to use our parking lot, no cost. And we're thinking that, you know, with moving with these additional nine spots closer to their building, it will better for from patrons who can't walk distance to access the church. Additionally, it will allow for, again, you know, people who not only use the metro center, also downtown to use these additional spots. We typically run about thirty-five, forty spots a day, but you know, during the school year, it's a little tighter. And again, this will add additional parking. Parking lot for us with the metro center is not a money-making endeavor. We we simply offer as a service and we feel that it's it's important to the whole downtown area because being really the only ones with a an open parking lot of over two hundred parking spaces. And, you know, we do continue to maintain parking lot very well. We probably have best maintained area landscaping and in parking lot. Sometimes we have staff that subcarved on a not only on a daily basis, I would really challenge anyone to look at our site from weeds or cigarette butts or anything. It's it's extremely well-maintained. It's the best of of downtown. And we're simply hoping to do this as a service. You know, if there's if there's a lot of hurdles, we're just gonna take and try not to move forward with it. But yeah, it's it would be a help that downtown or the area where we were looking to place the spots is currently an area of non-permeable surface concrete, but we're replacing with light high material, maintaining the sidewalk that's currently there. We weren't going to affect that any. So it's really a one-for-one replacement with what we're looking to do. I'm not sure if you want to add anything additional.
No, I think that pretty well. But sidewalk to five feet where the parking is is added in. But I mean, we did. We can maintain the sidewalk for estuary and youth.
Okay. Well, that all sounds good. Did you get a copy of the the planning department's comments?
We did. Yes.
Okay. I think we'll just go through those just to see. See what you think about them. So, okay, so the first one. The proposal shows no landscape buffer adjacent to the new spaces. There's not enough space to include ninety-degree parking spaces and a five-foot landscape buffer while retaining a five-foot wide concrete walkway adjacent to the church. If the applicant reorients the spaces to forty-five degrees, there will be enough room for walkway buffer parking spaces and the required drive aisles. So if the applicant would like to proceed with no landscape buffer in this area, they will need to go before the zoning board appeals for a variance. How do you guys feel about that? Are you okay with a variance? Or do you want to take a look at revising the angle parking in there to fit?
Look at that, Nick. Big thing for us here, if, like you said, this is just a service to downtown. So if it becomes too many hurdles, as it is, it's a large cost for us just to add these few spots. No, if if we orientate an angle, I'm okay with that. As far as the five-foot sidewalk, I mean, we could eliminate that sidewalk and landscaping there. It just it seems kind of crazy to do. I mean, no one really uses that sidewalk. I think the whole time, you know, we've owned the metro center for over four years. I don't even know if I've ever seen anyone walk on that sidewalk. Have you, James, or?
Most most people cut right through the lot and kind of don't even use that that spot. And there was, I mean, really, the way it's laid out right now is that sidewalk come right up to churches land. So there is no existing landscape buffer. Our plan was just to cut that sidewalk back and leave the five feet of existing that's there. Instead, you know, we'd have to basically rip that out, rip out an existing sidewalk and add a a five-foot buffer if that's you guys were looking to do.
Yeah. Well, it definitely seems like I've been down there for a couple of weddings and I know that sidewalk gets pretty packed during wedding season. That's kind of where everybody leaves exits and then gathers. The limo usually lines up right along that curb line. At least it used to. I haven't been the one in a while there, but. So it'd be a shame to lose the sidewalk completely in through there. Are you are you opposed to the angled parking? The idea of it's basically the same thing just with angle parking?
No, I mean, the angle parking's fine. It's more it's more so that we were just trying to keep this again, as you know, it's it's the minimal change we're looking to do here. You know, it's you know, it's non-permeable. We're sticking with non-permeable. We're we're not affecting that area where the connection between us and the neighboring property, which they do have landscaping that comes up. So it's a pre-existing, you know, condition that we have there. We're more or less working on the other side of the the other side of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And I, again, I feel that, you know, with the church, again, you know, if the if Lord ever want anything, I mean, the documentation, we we don't, we don't get anything from them. But again, this would be a great service to them for older people. I worry about that, especially winter time, walking across the parking lot. You know, funerals, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, who knows? Maybe they would even have something where if they did an event where, you know, like you're talking, Nick, where larger, you know, limo or horse or something pulls up there and makes it better for them. We're leaving a good portion of the sidewalk, though they still have that large sidewalk and area where the actual entrances to the church from our parking lot.
Okay. Well, so the I think the the planning department's hands are a little bit tied on just if you go forward with this plan in order to get it approved, you would just need that variance. I don't think you'd have any problem getting that approved since the church has a huge lawn, like you're saying, as the buffer beside behind the sidewalk there. But it would be another step you'd have to take if you want to go with this this plan. I think the the comment from planning department was just if you wanted to simplify the process a little bit, you wouldn't need that variance. Unfortunately, the planning department doesn't have the ability to just waive the variance requirement. So I guess is probably it's in your hands with which one, which direction you want to go. But, okay, well, that's the that's the first comment. Let's see. So the other comments. The western walkway adjacent to the church previously contained seven trees. The trees were cut down and the tree wells paved with concrete around two thousand and nineteen. Staff recommends that at least three trees be replanted in this area with a minimum two-inch caliber tree. Any interest in opening those tree wells back up?
Well, this is my thought. Free lover myself, but we, when we remove those trees, first of all, I think personally, and I hear compliments all the time, our area looks a hundred and ten percent better than it with the trees were all old. They were broken. People hung garbage off them. You won't believe the drugs we found underneath the bushes that were there, the garbage. It was a real mess that we had on our hands. It'd be one thing if we were in downtown Skinniella's or downtown Saratoga. The boost that the stuff gets there. I mean, we're constantly cleaning up cigarettes and garbage cans. City added the that that Washington Street Mall area. And again, on the surface, I was, I went to the meetings and I'm a big believer in, in, you know, practicality. They aren't even emptying the garbage cans there. So now it's just more maintenance. What happens when even other like the city or municipality, again, respectfully in place to maintain this. It always bothers me when I come off the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge and I look at the weeds and the in the, I can't stand weeds and flower beds or the overgrown bushes. They never get trimmed. They plant that stuff. So we just try to be just, I mean, we have grasses there. I just don't think trees are really, it's really practical. If it was, I'd be fully on board with it. But it's not, you know, just if I would invite anyone down that leave it, come down for a week and grab a garbage bag and clean up for a week and then you could let me know what your thoughts are at the end of the week, how you feel about things, or if we plant stuff or the damage that's done on a weekly basis. I mean, we have people suffocate by our entrance doors at the metro center. We really are, you know, on the road. We've done so much with that building. We.
I don't mean to cut you off, but if you put a two inch caliber tree, that won't provide the area for having garbage doors like the creeping arby-vita you used to have down low on the ground. So a two-inch caliber tree is probably going to have a canopy that's like six or eight feet off the ground. Is that objectionable? Or does that solve some of your issues that you were describing with having garbage in them?
Brian, people go ahead and they and they pull limbs off these trees, you know, they give those things. I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to be a realist here. That's why we did that. And I'm, like I said, I'm really proud of what we've done and what we've created there. It's it's pretty incredible, the team we have. So that's that's really why I'm not really for. And again, if this was also if it was, if what we were doing here was a money-making thing where we were making money, we're doing this as a service to the church and.
What is the monthly fee for the for the spaces?
Well, it varies. It varies with with what you, I mean, typically, we try not to rent the spaces out at all. We we try to actually just keep them for our tenants, but it's, I think it's, what is it, James? How much? Three dollars, five dollars for so many hours?
Yeah.
For so many hours. But we typically, we try to stay away from, we've actually heard people from parking there on a monthly basis, but more of a daily to handle the daily traffic of students or people visiting to go to the restaurants or business.
Do you have bulk leases with any of the downtown landlords for their tenants to park in those spaces?
We have a few. We have a handful of people that park in our lot, but it's extremely minimal. Maybe, maybe, I would say maybe, maybe five, maybe seven. I don't know exactly the number.
Five or seven people or five or seven.
Five or seven, five or seven individuals.
Okay. I didn't mean to, I just wanted to clear what we're talking about.
Yeah.
All right. So it sounds like the two other comments about trees around the perimeter in different spots, you're kind of on the same same position with those areas as well. You wouldn't really want to add trees.
I'm on that committee or was on the committee for the Daco district and I know they're adding trees in those areas. And I think once they put that stuff in, again, unfortunately, we more stuff that we're going to have to end up maintaining because I know there, from my understanding, I could be wrong, they're extending, checking out the curb and removing parking and adding landscaping. So when that's done, you know, no one else is going to really maintain it. So we'll have to probably keep keep that those areas maintained, you know, around, at least around our property. I don't see. You know, once that happens, that's going to add additional landscaping. I don't know. I've, in the whole history, we've, as the trees have been cut down, I've only gotten compliments that people stop us and tell us how great it looks. And we have the nicest building in downtown, but that's maintained. So that's 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 kind of my take on it.
Nick, if I can just make a couple of comments, once the trees are planted as part of the Deco District project, the city parks department maintains trees. So tree maintenance is not something that has to be done by private property owners. If they need any work done on a tree, they can call the parks department and get that done. And then the other thing is that whatever, whenever the original site plan for this parking lot was presented and approved, that site plan included trees around the perimeter and trees in the landscape island. The removal of those trees goes against an approved site plan. And so what we're proposing in our staff report is that some of that deviation from an approved site plan be restored. It's possible, it's it's, it may even be possible for the city to require that all of the trees from the original site plan be replanted. But we think that, you know, in an effort to be sort of reasonable, we think that, you know, the limited number of trees that that we requested would make a big difference on the aesthetics of that area and the environmental conditions of that area.
All right. So I'm just looking at the last comment and it says, it's the staff, so after talking about the multiple locations where the trees have slowly disappeared over the last five years. The conclusion is it's the staff's position that restoring the recommended fifteen trees around the perimeter is a reasonable request. It would have a significant impact on the surrounding area. Especially since the city is making a large investment in street safety improvements through the Deco District project, including the planting of street trees. And the applicants' proposals should complement those improvements. So it sounds like the planning department is kind of compromising on fifteen trees around the perimeter. Is that something you would consider? You don't have to make a decision tonight. This will go to a public hearing for the next meeting, assuming it moves forward. Is that something you guys would consider?
I don't, I'm not sure, Nick. I guess we could give it some consideration.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, I we could ask, how's how are the other planning commission members feeling about the requests to add the trees? If anybody wants to weigh in, they don't have to, but just curious if anybody wants to weigh in.
Hey, Nick. It's Emmanuel. My daughter might disagree, but I'm with the staff on their recommendations.
All right. So Manny is in favor of the addition of trees. Anybody else want to weigh in? All right. Doesn't sound like anybody else wants to give an opinion at this point, but so I guess all we can ask is take a look at that. See what you think between now and and the next meeting and it's kind of up to you what you want to come back with. It sounds like I'm I'm in favor of the adding the trees back in. It probably makes sense in my profession, but so I guess weigh that based on the members and the approval they'll need, I guess, at the next meeting. But all right, well, in general, I think, I mean, the plan looks okay. Other than that, those requests to me. I guess so between next meeting and this meeting, you kind of have to decide whether you want to go for the variance. In which case, Tito, when does the zoning board meet next?
The next zoning board meeting is August first.
Okay. Could they get onto that agenda still if they wanted to move that forward?
It's possible. It depends on if the county could expedite review of the variance, which they may be able to do because they already have you know, the planning commission materials. So it's not a totally new project to them.
Okay. All right. So it sounds pretty reasonable that you, if you wanted to go the variance route, you probably could still get your stay on track for approval at the next meeting in August from us. But so, yeah, so between now and next meeting, I guess, decide on what do you want to go for the variance. And if you want to update the plan with any to show any, any of the treats. All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments about the the parking expansion?
You know, yeah, Nick, I'm just curious. Tito, you mentioned that the original plan had trees and then they were removed. I mean, are we in a position here that those trees really should be there? Or, I mean, the fact that they were taken down, is that in violation of the plan as as it was originally submitted?
It could be. It could be. The the parking lot's been there for a very long time, obviously. So we would have to do some digging to find an approved site plan for that parking lot. You know, but rather than go that route of of issuing a citation, we thought, you know, that a compromise would would get the city some some good results without, you know, excessively punishing the the applicant.
Is it? Is it something you're trying, you're looking to accomplish? I mean, are you? Are you taking a position that you strongly would like to see some kind of tree plan to make this a little more aesthetically pleasing?
That that's our position. Yeah. And and, you know, to go to the applicant's comments, we understand this isn't skinny atlas or Saratoga, but part of what this commission is charged with is improving the aesthetic conditions and the environmental conditions of the City of Binghamton. And so again, it's not, it's not Saratoga, but I don't think I do think that that the part of the commission's goal, goal should be to improve sites when possible and and however possible. And and I don't think that that what we're requesting, which is a return to the original site plan is is excessive.
Thank you.
All right. I guess also before we go through the motions of making motions, Justin, the the parking lot, what you said there about doing the maintenance and stuff, you're a hundred percent right. That the parking lot has never looked better around the perimeter with what is there. So this isn't a commentary on that you're not doing a great job with what you already have there because I agree, it hasn't looked this good in quite a while. So so congratulations on keeping it in good shape. What it, what is there right now? So all right. Well, if nobody else has any other comments or questions, I'll I'll make a motion that the proposal is an unlisted action under seeker and that the planning commission should act as lead agency for seeker review.
Seconded.
All right. Seconded by Manny. All in favor? Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes, sir.
Joe?
Yes.
And Manny?
Yeah.
All right. I'm also a yes. That's five in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at the August meeting for five five twenty.
Second.
All right. Seconded by Mario. All in favor? Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I'm also a yes. That's five in favor, zero opposed. All right. So we'll see you back in August and we'll have a public hearing for the project. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So now we're on to the next portion of our meetings, meeting, which is public hearings and final deliberations. So in this portion of our meeting, we'll be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we were reviewing your information, so it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of your project or remind us what you're planning. And then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we'll open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. Uh, to our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any members of the applicants team that's planning to speak for our public record. And to anyone from the community that will be speaking in regard to a project tonight, please also start off by stating your name and address for our records. Alright, so tonight, if you would like to call in to comment about a project. Uh, you can call the planning department at six zero seven, 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 two, seven, zero, two, eight. Um, unfortunately, we don't have call waiting in the planning department, so, uh, if you do get a busy signal, just please keep trying. Um, and we will, uh, try and take everyone in the order that they call or as they call in. Um, and if you're on the Zoom meeting tonight, if you'd like to speak about a project, if you could, uh, raise your hand. There's a raise your hand button at the bottom of the screen. If you raise your hand, uh, the planning department will try to identify anybody who wants to speak. Um, for any of our public hearings as they come up. Alright, so tonight, our first public hearing is for the applicant, uh, Daniel. Yurka, Danielle Yurka, uh, project address is one hundred Richard Ave. And this is a site plan review and special use permit to construct a new single unit dwelling with four bedrooms in the R1 single unit dwelling district. Alright, is there anyone from the one hundred Richard Ave project on the Zoom call?
Yes, hi, this is Danielle. And I also have, um, my builder here, Chris, as well with Eagle Construction.
Alright, Danielle, do you mind giving us your, uh, address for the record?
Um, sure, my personal address is six Row Ave, Binghamton, New York, one three nine zero three.
Alright, and then your builder's address is?
Four, four, six Park Avenue, New York.
Alright, sounds great. For this, this is a little bit unique, usually we've, uh, seen people before, so for this, uh, project, this is the first time we're seeing you, so if you could give us a brief overview. You're planning to do.
Sure, um, so again, I, well, first I just wanted to say thank you, I appreciate your time in reviewing. Um, my application, uh, my building permits, um, as my first time going through this, so I'm sorry I haven't met with anybody before. As this planning process is very new to me. This is, um, so yes, I am, uh, my, my family and I are looking to build at the property site of one hundred Richard Avenue. A, um, four bedroom, uh, three and a half bath home. Um, located, uh, near the back of the property, um, as you could see from the, um, site plan there. Um, we do plan to, um, have a driveway, um, some type of a roundabout driveway that goes to the home. And, um, finish off all of the property, um, with new shrubs, uh, greenery, lawn, um, trees. Um, flowers and so forth. Um, as you can see from the house there, as you drive into Vine Street. Um, the house, the driveway would be a little bit on the longer side, but the, um, the garage is going to be on the right side of the home. And the front, uh, will be tipped a little bit overlooking, uh, towards the, the city of Binghamton there.
Nice. Alright, um, and. As far as, uh, everyone's aware, the only reason you're in front of the planning board is because. You're doing a four to five bedroom, uh, building, which requires a special use permit?
Um, yes, to my understanding, um, yes, it is a four bedroom home, um, however, I know the plans did state. Um, we, we are not, um, we have no intentions of finishing off that basement or that attic space. Um, and there is also no bathroom in the attic, um, and there's also no bathroom in the basement either. Um, so those areas will, uh, be completely unfinished, uh, the first floor, uh, does have the kitchen dining room. Uh, mudroom, playroom, uh, family room, study foyer and a half bath, and the second floor is just bedrooms and, uh, three bathrooms.
Alright. Alright, seems pretty straightforward.
Nick, I, I don't know if you wanted, um, clarification on that, uh, but. A, a single family house usually is exempt from planning review, what is requiring that, uh, special use permit is the four bedrooms, but. Um, otherwise this project would be exempt from planning commission review or planning review of any kind.
Okay, alright. Let's see.
The staff report say that the attic contains a bathroom. And then there's a full bath in the basement level as well.
Uh, the attic showed a rough in, uh, uh, possible location for a bathroom to be, uh, built in the future. Um, and that's, that's where our comments, that's what our comments were on the potential future expansion plan in the basement and attic. Um, I did get a message from, uh, Ms. Yurka saying that they do not plan on expanding to the basement and attic, but. Um, I just wanted to note that in the staff report.
Yes, and if I could just add that these were, this was a stock plan originally that I had purchased. Um, so the, but, uh, those plans were pre-designed with, um, the future plans of an attic and potential, um, basement finished off with the bathroom. It's not something that we had added into that. I just never had it removed from the planning site afterwards from the design.
Okay. Alright, um, as, and as far as you know, uh, no controversy about, with any of the neighbors about building the house here?
Um, to my understanding, no, actually, when we purchased this property, um, I think everyone was kind of pleased, there was, um, a lot of. Um, items that were left on the property, um, we've taken a lot of interest to it, we've cleaned it up, um, we've removed, uh. Some metals, uh, some campers, uh, some debris, um, so it's actually, um, enhanced the backyards of some people. I would say also, um, but no, there's been no complaints, nobody has come forward and, and spoken with me directly on that.
Okay, great. Alright, anybody have any questions or comments before we open the public hearing for this project? Alright, we've seen no questions or comments, we'll, uh, we'll do the public hearing and see if anybody calls in. Uh, alright, so this is our first public hearing tonight. This is for the applicant, uh, Danielle Yurka. Project address is one hundred Richard Ave. This is a site plan review and special use permit to construct a new single unit dwelling with four bedrooms in the R1 single unit dwelling district. Uh, if there's anybody that would like to call in and comment on the project, uh, the phone number for the planning department. Is six oh seven, 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 two, seven, zero, two, eight. Or if you're on Zoom calling and would like to speak, uh, if you want to just click the raise hand button at the bottom. And try and call people in the order that they raise their hands. If anybody raises. Wait just a minute to see if anybody calls in.
Nick, we just, uh, we did not receive any letters or emails, we just got a call, um, and the person is an attendee. I'm going to allow him to speak now.
Alright.
Uh, see. Sir, you can go ahead and speak.
Yes, uh, we live at eighty-nine Upper Vine Street. The property's list is one hundred Richard. Uh, my concern is there is zero access for emergency services on Richard Street to this property. If there's a nine one one call and they are dispatched to Richard Street, it's impossible to get to this property. The only way to access it is off of Upper Vine Street, and I feel that this property needs to be rezoned. So it's listed as being on Upper Vine Street. That's the only access to the property, it's landlocked.
Alright, fantastic comment, I think.
Thing I would like to ask, uh, there is supposedly existing water and sewer lines. My question is, was that ever approved by the city and the city inspectors? That work was done after hours and on weekends by the former property owners, not by Danell or. Of contractors, but the previous property owners. The fire hydrant has a label on it that's out of service. And when I was prior with the city, I was told because there's no water mains there or sewer. So I'm questioning whether or not that's a valid sewer line and water line. Uh, perhaps you can do a TV inspection on that and approve it, or however you may have to do it. But, uh, and I was told that it's not valid, that doesn't exist, but it's there. I have questions about the, uh, quality of the work and, and it was installed.
May I comment now, if that's okay?
I'll tell you what, Danielle, uh, let's just wait, um, so we, uh, uh, standard procedure, we, uh, take all the comments. And, uh, we make a list and then we'll close the, the comments section and then you can respond to all the, the questions. Uh, just goes a little smoother that way. Alright, um. And to the, the person that's, uh, was speaking, um, I'm sorry, did you give your name and address for our record?
My name is Gary Loyally, L O I C H L E. My address is eighty-nine Upper Vine Street. We are the property that is directly next to one hundred Richard. Or excuse me, one hundred Robert Street.
Okay, perfect, thank you, um, anything else you want to comment? Uh, Gary, anything else you wanted to, to say?
Uh, no, I think that's basically, my concern is the, uh, nine one one issue. That if you dial nine one one from the property and identify as one hundred Richard. That, uh, there is no access from Richard's Avenue, Richard Street. Uh, the only access is to, uh, from Upper Vine. I think it should be zoned to be an Upper Vine Street. Uh, location for nine one one purposes.
Alright, that's a fantastic comment, we will review that in a minute. Alright, well, thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
Alright, um, anybody else, uh, Brian, I see your hand is raised, are you interested in speaking or?
Alright. It should not be raised, I don't know why it was raised.
Okay. Um, alright, any phone calls into the planning department?
No phone calls and no raised hands other than Brian, and now that's gone.
Hit that by accident, sorry about that folks.
Alright, well, I think that's probably enough time to cover everybody, um, so close the public hearing. Alright, um, Danielle, do you want to, uh, respond about the address change and the water and sewer question?
Sure, I completely agree with Gary, um, and yes, I mean, one hundred Richard Ave, it, it doesn't show up as anything. Um, I am, um, in agreement to change that, in fact, that was one thing that was on my to-do's to try to figure out how to do. Um, but yes, I would like that changed to an Upper Vine Street address as well.
Okay. Alright, and then, and do you know anything about the water and sewer?
Um, yes, we are working, um, with Jim Torto, who originally was the, um, company that installed, um, the. Uh, sewer and water lines on Richard Avenue, the original Richard Avenue, as well as, um, the Upper Vine Street location. Um, he is currently on that, he has inspected them and is looking at that, and we are currently working with him, um, to tie those into our property lines as well.
Okay, great, so you're on top of water and sewer and the address change?
Yes.
Tito, uh, just out of curiosity, how do you get an address changed to the, or file for changing your address?
So there, there, um, there's an official address for the parcel, um, and so that would be done through Brune County Real Property. And then there's a, the mailing address is a separate issue that has to be done through the post office.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, so the public hearing's been closed, uh, anybody have any comments or questions for Danielle or the builder?
What is the areas of disturbance and will there be a SWIP or a SIRP needed?
There is less than an acre being disturbed, uh, as part of this project, and so there's no SWIP required.
Very good. And an ERP is not needed for a single family?
Correct.
Alright, well, if there's no other questions or comments, um. I'll, uh, I'll make a motion that the proposal is a type-two action under seeker and no other, uh, review is required. Environmental review. And I'll make a motion. All under the same motion, that the requirements for site plan review. Uh, and special use permit have been met. Uh, contingent, uh. That the address get changed to, uh, an Upper Vine Street, uh, address. So that it's clear for fire and rescue where they're responding to an emergency. Alright, there's my motion.
I will second that.
Alright, seconded by Mario, uh, all in favor, Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Manny?
Yes.
Alright, I'm also a yes, so that's five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much, all of you, we do appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so that brings us to our last public hearing for the evening. Uh, the applicant Fairview Recovery Services, uh, the project address is one ten Fairview Ave. Those fourteen to eighteen Clapham Street. Uh, this is a site plan review for the construction of a twenty-bed social services building on an existing social services campus. In an ancillary parking area in the R3 residential multi-unit dwelling district. As anyone on for the one ten Fairview Ave project.
Sarah Campbell.
Hello, Sarah.
Hi, Nick.
Welcome back.
Ken Gay from Keystone Associates also online.
Alright. Uh, Tito, is there a, a way to mute, uh?
Yeah, the problem is that the sound is coming from one of many Sarah Campbells. So I'm not sure which one. I'm using.
I think it might also be the one labeled Galaxy Tab S five E.
That's the one that I see keeps seeing light loaded up.
Okay, there, that's my mistake, so I muted them.
Alright.
I, uh, and just, uh, so you all know, I will be away from the computer for two minutes and, uh, I will be back shortly.
Alright. Alright, Sarah, has, uh, anything changed since the last time we saw you?
Yeah, we have submitted an updated plan, um, with some more indications, uh, measurements, so that you can really see what we're looking at. I think I'll ask Ken, um, from Keystone, just to go through the changes that we made. In response to both your comments and also some public comments. Um, just to point out what, what we've changed, Ken, if you could do that, that'd be great, and can we put the, oh, there it is, okay, great.
I will, once I figure out why you're just stopped. Get me? Can people hear me?
Yeah.
We can hear you now, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm really garbled and my computer just shut off and turned back on. Um, what we've changed since the last meeting, we, we looked at the, uh, comments that were, uh, given last time. About the proximity to the road, about the, uh, number of, uh, trees that we were, um. Taking down as well as the proximity to the driveway entrance across, uh, Clapham. So what we did is, uh, we, two drawings that we've shown, um. The, the first one we called the site revisions, um, and I'm not seeing them up. At the meeting, on the main site right now, but, um. The entrance, the building was moved fifteen feet back from the road into the property. Uh, we also moved the building twenty-five feet to. And also straightened the driveway, uh, these were all accomplished to do a number of things. Which was. These were all accomplished to do a number of things, which was to provide more of a buffer of the building. Road edge as well the further away from the drive-in. Then the driveway and entrance to parking area was also to have it be further away from the corner property as well. The second drawing shows proposed site plan and what our thoughts were in the proposed site, which are to really show with an aerial photograph the trees that we were able to maintain and then adding and adding additional trees. What we need to do from a civil engineering standpoint was to introduce a retaining wall on the south edge of the proposed parking and drive area. This is a substantial retaining wall. But it permitted us to maintain a large portion, if not all, you can see the difference between the two site plans, the existing trees that buffer the southern properties from our proposed area. Obviously, the existing properties residential have trees to them, but we've also been able to retain a large number of the existing trees that are on fair property. And then on the north side or along Clapham, we retained some of the trees on the, towards the corner. And then where we could not, by putting our building in here, we had to construct the building, we would lose a good portion of the, I'm not going to call them trees here because they really are, some of them are trees, but most of them are brush. But we've introduced and proposed mature tree buffers there with trees that are about twenty feet tall. And we would propose coniferous trees there that would not lose leaves in the, in the, in the winter to provide a better buffer for the, from the road to the building. We believe with twenty-foot trees, we will be pretty much blocking a good view, especially from the driveway entrance and from the resident across the street. So that's kind of a recap of what we did since the last time.
All right.
You could just remind me how far down the building is from the road? Like, what's the grade change?
The grade change is obviously Clapham slopes from east down to Fairview, about, I want to say sixty feet in elevation drop. Maybe not that much. It's sixty feet from one corner to a corner diagonal. But even though it is a three-story building, what is visible at the road edge on Clapham is about a story and a half because it sits down lower. The the lowest level of the building is ten thirty-two. And at Clapham, the road edge is about, it is anywhere from about halfway up the second story to level with the third story. So it's not going to appear to be a three-story building along Clapham because it is, it is pushed down.
And those are the only, those, did we look at the opportunity to place the building down on the other corner? I know, I know you looked at that and there were some reasons that that was just not a viable option.
A number, yes, we did. A number of issues there is it takes away from the parking. But it also now puts a three-story building right in the corner there. So there was some impact there as well as removal of some parking, and it also is, there's quite a bit of gray change there. What was, what was the nicety of where we placed the building? We are allowing our building not to appear so big because the back end of the building or the north and east edges of the building, sides of the building, I shouldn't say edges, the north and sides of the building were, were, were into the, into the hillside. They were basically serving as our retaining walls for the first one to one and a half stories of the building. So the building appeared to be a much smaller building in its location. If we moved it to the other corner, it would be a three-story building. And it, we would lose parking. And really, the accessibility to that, the way we have placed the parking, the building where it is, someone that needs wheelchair access would come right into the second story. The way the grades are down below, there'd be quite a bit of ramp and site redevelopment to get that to work.
Thank you. I think that's all the changes, Nick, that we've proposed and what we've looked at in terms of responding to some of the concerns that the, that the neighborhood had. I also, for some reason, I thought I was coming to see you today. So we do have some information from a realtor with respect to, there it is. With Patrick Kelly, the executive director of Fairview, had with John Burns, who is a licensed real estate broker in terms of his reaction to the concern that property values would be diminished. You know, I'll just summarize them. Basically, the campus already exists. It probably existed before some, many of the homes were built. And that adding an additional building does not change the property values or diminish the property values. If that was going to happen, it would have already happened. And then there's some just anecdotal information about a two thousand and three sale at the top of American East Street for thirty-eight thousand, and then twenty-twenty-one sale for, at the same, same area for thirty-six thousand five hundred. That's an eighteen-year span, not, you know, obviously a big difference. There's also some comments about the townhouses on Addison Court. There was a recent listing that was only on the market for eight days with a contract for a hundred and nine thousand. In two thousand and eight, a property sold for ninety-eight thousand. In two thousand and ten for a hundred and five thousand. And two thousand sixteen, a hundred and six thousand. So values are not depreciating based on, you know, what's already there. And again, he doesn't believe that they would be further depreciated by the addition of this, of this building. I think that, does anyone have anything else, Ken or Patrick?
No, I don't think that was a good synopsis of the call that I have just done.
And again, just to, I guess I'll just, just to reflect, I did see some letters that were recently submitted. You know, some of the comments, I don't think merit reply based, you know, with respect to the quote-unquote types of individuals that would be occupying the, the structure. This is obviously a social services agency, and these are people seeking treatment. These are the people that we want to support. And also with respect to, you know, just the general community in itself, I think those comments, you know, I'll just leave those to the commenters. But it is a permitted use. So it, this isn't a special permit application. I don't believe it is a, is a site plan application. And so, you know, the criteria, well, you certainly all know your criteria. So I, I think I just want to remind everyone that, that this is, this use is permitted. And with that, I think we'll be quiet.
All right, thank you for the update. So just a clarification, so no actual variances are needed for anything that you're proposing.
No.
Nick, the, the social services use is an existing use on one-ten Fairview Ave. And then on the Clapham, Clapham lots, ancillary parking lot is also permitted use. You know, I'll defer to Brian, up to Brian on on this, but I think there is, you do have some room to scrutinize and increase in, in sort of the intensity of a, of an existing use on a lot or an expansion of that by the addition, with the addition of a new building. But Sarah is correct in that that use exists on that lot, and that's, that's a legal use on that lot.
Yeah. And as far as review regulations or whatever, there's no actual, let's say, percentage of use or there's no, there's no maximum minimums of allotted use in that zone.
I think that what you're probably referring to would be lot coverage, and I don't think they're anywhere near the lot coverage.
Yeah, I guess lot coverage would be the closest thing.
It would be a different situation if they had, like sometimes downtown, we'll see a, a gas station that has a taxi cab company that has a plumbing company working out of the top floor of it or something like that. And then you're getting multiple users crammed onto one particular spot. That's not what's happening here. It's all the same use.
Okay.
And Nick, maybe I just wouldn't mention too that, you know, the neighbors did note that there is a, they are unsatisfied with the parking issue and that there is off-site parking, and we acknowledge that that's a problem that we're trying to solve with the addition of this parking lot.
Okay.
And that was, this can, the, also chime in on that. That was one of the negatives to moving as the other corner because we're replacing existing parking. And, and they're just going to pull her out into the street, so.
Okay. And just one other clarification, the last time this was presented, it was, there was talk about one of the existing buildings is coming down. Is that correct?
It is proposed, they are in plan to remove a new existing building. However, right now, that's a, that's an alternate to our project because of the current economic situation. We are not sure whether we will be able to remove that building because of costing.
Okay.
And that's further complicated with the additional instruction we're going to have to do with retaining walls and its present location and for present proposal.
Okay, so so the reduction in square footage of buildings on the property is not a guarantee based on the demolition being an alternative.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that building being actively used right now?
It is. We use it for staff, we use it for group classes, we also use it for a few staff offices. So it still has function already.
Okay.
If it needed to come down, we would, you know, we would make other arrangements for, you know, the staff and the goods and all of that. We're prepared to move what we currently use to do in staff offices, so that when the building gets taken down, it means the whole.
Okay, Sarah, I'm sorry. Do you mind summarizing what he just said? It was tough to hear.
Yeah, it was tough for me to hear too. It sounds like they are using that building for administrative offices. But if they can take it down, they will and, and move those administrative functions elsewhere. Is that right, Patrick?
Yeah, I'm sorry if you can't hear me. We do use it for some group use with the patients. We also use it for a few staff offices. But if it needed to come down within the proposal, then we, we are prepared to move those to other areas.
All right. Well, let's do this. The public hearing is held open, is held over from the last meeting. Since we have new plans, it'd be appropriate for people to comment on the new plans that they're seeing tonight. So let's, let's open the public hearing and see who calls in or raises their hands to speak about the project, and we'll see what the people are thinking.
Just so that we have to listen to this transcript or we have to look at this transcript in the future. What building are we talking about is the potential to come down? We're looking at the proposed site plan with the new building and the new arrangements, the parking lot. I'm assuming it's one of these down at the lower end of the picture.
It's the one immediately, the one that basically fronts the, the larger parking lot on the corner.
Okay, so it has the black roof right next to the parking lot on the, on the lower end of that lot?
Yeah, yeah. You'll see the white car and the black car. Then there's some edges there. It's one right to the right of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so this is the public hearing continuation for the applicant Fairview Recovery Services. The project address is one-ten Fairview Ave as well as fourteen to eighteen Clapham Street. This is a site plan review for the construction of a twenty-bed social services building on an existing social services campus in an ancillary parking area in the R-three residential multi-unit dwelling district. If there's anyone who would like to call in to talk about the project tonight, the phone number is six zero seven 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 two seven zero two eight. And if you're on the Zoom call and would like to talk or speak about the project, if you could click the raise hand button at the bottom, we'll call on everybody who raises their hand.
Nick, we don't have any phone calls, but we do have two hands raised right now. I'm going to start with Anthony Mazza, raise his hand first.
All right.
Mr. Mazza, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak now.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I take exception to Sarah Campbell's comment that we cannot talk about the people that are going to occupy that building. All right, Sarah? You can, because that's part of the issue here. The last time we had this meeting, okay, the building was located farther up the hill. I invited everyone to come up that hill, all right, to walk around the block to see, you know, what was there as far as the residences that were there. Okay, I don't know anybody that came. Did anybody from the planning board come up and walk around that hill? No. No. All right, and she quoted, the, the, that's an issue, Sarah. The people that are occupying that building is an issue. Okay?
Because the rules of approval of projects like this, they state the pro-motor safe environment, not cause substantial injury to the value of other properties in the surrounding neighborhood. Mr. Burns, I don't know where you got the quotes, and I recognize the fact that Addison Court is well above. And the houses you also quoted by Mr. Burns, one, one of those houses was vacant for quite a period of time, and it had damage. Okay, and so I can understand the property not increasing in value. Okay, and the other is in the corner of, of east. And that's just a small residence. So what you did is you, you've quoted three areas that are insignificant to the value of property. Now, Sarah, if you want to quote me, or I live across the street there, okay, and if you want to put your name on the dotted line that my value of my property will not decrease, I gladly see it. All right, I give you a chance to answer that.
All right, any?
This is public comments, so the, the public comments are addressed to the commission. Advocate will respond after the public hearing is closed.
All right, respond to that, okay, when she gets a chance. All right, this, this, and furthermore, you know, this new project here, you know, and everything, where they put it, you can still, you know, the, the trees you plan on putting there, you know, the, the fir trees. Look at the picture you have on the display now. Those trees, it must be taken in the winter. They're bare of leaves. Okay, you could see right through them. Okay, now I don't know where you're going to get twenty-foot tall fir trees. You know, you have a problem with fir trees, twenty-foot tall fir trees, but I don't know where you're going to get them. All right, let's, let's hear somebody tell me where you're going to get twenty-foot tall fir trees, that I'm not going to see them. That building right now, when you look across, you know, right in the bottom portion that's pointing down, you can see right into my living room. Right into my living room. Okay, we've been in that house for fifty years. We've always paid our taxes on time. We've raised two children in that property. This new construction, right, which, you know, will ultimately damage our property value. And I don't believe that's within the approval, you know, requirements or standards of your, of this planning boards. I know it's not within the approval. You're supposed to take a look. I know it's not within the approval. You're supposed to take a look at the properties around there. If you want Mister Burns to come up, let him assess my property, Sarah. Let him assess uh the property, uh the Ewing's. Let him assess the promise of of the Hutchins or somebody like that who has complained or the building on a corner there. Alright? Let him assess those properties. And the impact this is gonna be. This is gonna have a significant impact. And not only did we have people with, you know, but said that their property value will be compromised, but also there were ladies in here who said. That they were just plain fearful. Going to bed at night, those ladies shouldn't be fearful. There's plenty of sites to locate this, plenty of sites where this can be put in there and. You where you, this is, this is a case where you're gonna give keys to the to the kids in the candy store. You have the state hospital. Alright, you have the the uh crossing the VA building downtown, which is close to the library. Uh close to within a couple of blocks of of the YMCA, two of them, the YMCA and YWCA. You have people, you know, all those closures are very close to that churches, libraries, everything downtown. That building can be modernized very easily. I disagree with this wholeheartedly. For all the reasons that I did before. You can't deny the fact that people feel scared. People are scared.
We appreciate your uh your comments tonight.
Haven't finished, I haven't finished yet. There's other people who also uh are are concerned, right? The lights they put up there.
A stadium.
And across, which shines across to the property on the other side of the street. Look at the corner of the uh. The the female residence building. Now walk, go across their driveway to the other side of the road. Go up here tonight, come on up here tonight, all the people on the planning board. Look while those lights shine, look all the light, it's looking like a Christmas tree up here and they're gonna put probably more lights in. More value impact. Maybe Mister Burns should come up here and take a look and tell me that that property isn't compromised. That's all I have to say.
Alright, we appreciate your comments. Um we'll we'll give the applicant a chance to respond. Uh after the public hearing comment portion is closed, but we appreciate your comments. Uh alright, Tito, uh who else is on with their hand raised?
Uh we have Dan Grassi.
Alright.
Mister Grassi, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. I wasn't sure. I I don't do Zoom too much. Hi. Um, this is Dan Grassi. I live at uh one twenty-one Fairview Avenue, which is right at the bottom of Clapham Street. So um I'm directly impacted by this. Um. I just wanna say that um this, this uh is a such a. Such a ludicrous proposal, I I can't believe it's being taken seriously. Uh one thing that's misleading is everyone keeps mentioning that this is a social services building. Okay, that could mean a lot of things, like the women's residence, for example. What this is going to be is a crisis center. This is going to be uh what's what the state calls a crisis stabilization center. That means it's for the treatment of drug abuse crises. And mental health crises, okay? And it's a twenty-bed facility. And this is a, this is not just another social services building. I think we have to be very specific here. And understand what they're attempting to build here. This is a crisis center. And you don't put a crisis center in the middle of a quiet residential neighborhood. And just to verify that, on Friday I spoke to an official. In Oasis, Oasis is the Office of Addiction Services and Supports. They oversee operations at Fairview Recovery. I spoke to an official in the commissioner's office. And she told me that, to her knowledge, they never cite crisis centers. In residential neighborhoods if they can help it. And Fairview Recovery can certainly help it. They have a lot of options in Binghamton. They don't have to build this here. So this is not just another residence, this is not another hotel for people who are being rehabbed. This is a crisis center, and what does that mean? That means that emergency vehicles will be coming and going day and night. Three o'clock in the morning, sirens and flashing lights will be a regular occurrence in our residential neighborhood. Okay, this is a totally inappropriate proposal for this neighborhood. And I I can't believe it's being taken seriously, it's just ridiculous. This is not the location for this. And and they don't even have, and the parking lot that they're they're drawing, it's not, it doesn't even cover the people that are parking on the street now. Emergency vehicles on Clapham Street, uh it'll destroy the street, it's a, it's a, it's a secondary street, it's it's not even wide enough. And uh emergency vehicles day and night. Completely unworkable. It's a terrible idea and they have to go back to the drawing board. And I, believe me, Tony and I have spoken to everybody, and I mean everybody, who lives within shouting distance of this. And nobody supports this. Nobody i- in any way supports this. And our feeling is, Fairview Recovery Services has gone as far as they can go on this property. There are too many cars as it is, there are too many clients wandering around the streets unsupervised as it is. And there's just too much extra traffic ever since they built the women's center. It's just a, it's a traffic circle, it's terrible. And and to suggest the the putting a crisis center in our neighborhood, I I can't believe it, it bothers my mind. They really, this, this, this should never be approved and Oasis said they never, they never cite these things in residential areas. And they were, they were surprised to hear it. We're we're following up on that with them, but uh. This is a terrible idea and and anyone who cares anything about taxpaying homeowners in this city. Shouldn't support this. We are, we are, it it'll destroy the neighborhood, it it'll destroy the neighborhood. You have twenty people in on in drug crises and mental health crises added to the, added to the vicinity. This is entirely different from the facilities that they have now. They have a residence on Fairview. They have the women's residence and then they have the uh the other residence on Merrick. This is an entirely different animal. And it should not be approved.
Alright, we appreciate your comments for sure. Um alright, any, anything else, Dan?
No, that's all, I guess.
We appreciate you calling in.
Thank you.
And being on the call. Um alright, any other uh hands raised, Tito?
Nick, one second, I have a caller, I'm trying to um get the microphone close enough.
Okay.
Ma'am, could you go ahead and speak?
Yes, my name is Kathy Gross, I live at fifteen Merrick Street. On the corner of Merrick and East.
Nick, can you, can you all hear her?
I can.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um just wanna clarify my residence I bought for thirty-eight thousand, but it's been valued at close to ninety recently. Um just saying that for Mister Burns. Um I have, I've driven around uh where that is downtown. Uh the currently on Court Street. I don't understand why you would move it off of that when you have a fire station that you could run to in case you had an emergency. Um we have had the ambulance appear many times at our homes. Um sometimes it takes up to ten to fifteen minutes, so that would be a concern if someone is in crisis and needing an ambulance. Um I also wonder, I appreciate the the moment, how you tried to rescale it to be less invasive. But I walked, you know, I had the plan in my hand and I walked through the neighborhood and I still don't see how it's not gonna interrupt it. Even in the summer, on my second floor, lights come in from the Fairview Recovery Center. It come into our bedroom windows, our bathroom window on the second floor, so if you're gonna put any more lights in there, that is also going to be disruptive. Um more so. I do appreciate the fact that you wanna leave my trees out back, I totally do. Um and are trying to work a way to do it, but again, I don't understand why you wanna move it off. Of Court Street where it's easier to get to hospitals, it's easier to get um security to help, I mean ambulances. Up here, you're going to be, it's twenty minutes to Wilson, it's probably fifteen minutes to Lourdes. And the ambulance, sometimes it takes ten to fifteen minutes to get up here. And I I don't feel that the neighborhood people are being listened to. I I feel that our concerns about our our homes are are not being heard. Um that's all I have. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for calling in. We'll give it another minute and see if there's any other phone calls that come in.
Nick, I just wanna uh say for the record, we did get um five letters. Um all in opposition from Grassi, Mazza, Ewing, Gross, and Hutchings. And uh you all should have been able to read those on Basecamp.
Yes.
In addition to any phone calls, are there any additional hands that are raised, Tito?
No.
Alright, any other phone calls?
No, not at this time.
Alright, alright, well. Seeing other phone calls, I think we've covered everything pretty thoroughly, so I'm going to. Close the public hearing for the project. Alright, uh Sarah, you wanna respond to any of the comments?
Um yeah, sure, I will with the team. I'm not sure that I'm qualified to respond to all of them, but um. With, okay, let's see. Um again, I'm not gonna comment on the um residence of the facility. I think that is not a proper site plan consideration, um given that is a permitted use and I. Um I guess I will ask um Patrick to. Um discuss the crisis component to the extent that Ryan Seacrest even wants that conversation held. Um but I I think that um is not appropriate. Um if the, if the site plan requires the twenty-foot trees be placed at at planting, then that's what will be required. And it will be our responsibility to do that. Again, what other sites might be appropriate or inappropriate is, again, not a site plan consideration. Um so I'm not, you know, I. I I'm not gonna waste your time frankly in talking about where else it could go. Obviously, there are many other locations, but that's a a classic not in my backyard conversation and. Maybe appropriate to a special permit conversation, but is not, in my opinion, appropriate to a, just a regular site plan. Um I I'm not a real estate agent, so I don't purport to be able to uh. Talk about the opinion of one that we have submitted to you. Um you know, that's the information that that was given to Patrick um and is reported to you. I I I think it is interesting anecdotally. Um but again, I think uh I I think we have to take the the opinion of the expert in that circumstance. Um with regard to lighting, obviously that is something that can be controlled. And if the neighbors are currently having issues with lighting, they should report that to Fairview. They can modify lighting to eliminate, you know, unwanted. Um intrusion into residential homes. Obviously, you can put down lighting in, you can put house shields on. Um I'm not aware that there have ever been a complaint about that, but I'm sure that Fairview would be able to address that and would continue to address that. Um with the new, with the new parking lot. Um. We would be willing to accept as a condition the removal of the existing house that we showed you. Um oh wait, we believe that the funding agency would accept that as a condition that frankly might help us. Obtain funding to um get rid of that, which then does recruit, you know, decrease the potential. Um occupancy at the site. Um. See if what I'm missing. Patrick, do you wanna just talk about what, you know, what what you, what a normal person or someone not in your line of work might define as a crisis versus. Um you know, th- there's a difference, it's, the these are not people who require hospitalization. That is not obviously what this is, this facility is designed to be. But maybe you could just discuss a little bit about the proposed residence of the of the new building.
Uh Sarah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um it is a stabilization level of care, which is, which is um. Exactly right, Sarah, they're not folks that are um in need of a hospital-based setting. Um and the mental health crisis that Mister Grassi spoke about. Um you know, somebody that's suicidal or that's psychotic would not come to our crisis center. Um they would be sent to the hospital. Um the sirens and the um. You know, day and night with the, with the police cars and the ambulances would not happen. This is a referral-based uh program, so that nobody is showing up just unannounced. In a crisis, coming to our building, that would never happen. They would go to the hospital, they would go to behavioral health, they have twenty-four hour um emergency. Uh round-the-clock medical care. Um this is a person that's going to be referred to us, worked up by our admissions coordinator. And um you know, ferreted out to make sure that they're appropriate for our level of care. And can function in that level of 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 the setting. Um and they would be brought to us by either another provider or their family or friends. Um this is not, this is not being, uh nobody's being brought to us through an ambulance. Um that 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 absolutely would never happen. Um there are folks that are in need of some stabilization in terms of some medicine. Uh oversight by place management, nursing staff. Um they're, they are not a threat to the community, but I've been here for twenty-five years, there's never been. An instance where um a neighborhood uh resident was assaulted. Or apostled, anything of that nature. Um when somebody loses our service, they go down the hill and they are, you know, off on their way to to um. Whatever it is they're looking to do, if they need use again or to get to a family or friends, they're not looking to. Break into somebody's house or beat somebody up. Um. I I've never heard that anybody up here has ever been um that they have felt unsafe. Um so just to, just to clarify the level of this. The other piece I just wanted to speak about was, uh with all due respect to Mister Mazza. Who I did have come and he did come to the building and he spoke in my office. Um the building, the new women's building has been there since two thousand and sixteen. And the same lighting has been there since two thousand and sixteen. And the first time that I heard that he had an issue with the lighting was when he came to my office. Two or three weeks ago, I had never heard about it before, he would have absolutely taken care of it and I told him in my office I would address it. And he said, no, that's okay. And he said, no, that's okay. Those were his exact words. No, that's okay. And again, with, um, Mrs. Gross, I would, I would love to deal with the complaint is and take care of it for you. I wouldn't want a light shining in my house either. So, and that's something that we can easily address. So I would, I would, um, you know, we, I pride it, I pride ourselves on being good neighbors up here at Fairview. We've never had any major issues. And I don't see any issues outside of what we already have occurring in the future. We're just trying to help people that, that are dealing with substance use disorder. It's not a mental health primary location. So they, their mental health issues are secondary. They have to have a substance use disorder first. So the, the mental health is like depression, anxiety. It's all treatable by our medical director. It's not, these are not major mental health issues that are gonna, you know, be spilling out into the community. As far as people walking around on suicide, that did not happen. It did happen when we were a community resident, but now that we are a treatment facility, they must, whenever they're outside of the building, they must be accompanied by staff. So you could not be seeing any of our folks outside the building unless they're at their sites. They should not be on the street. You know, like I said, we're just trying to help out. It's a, it's a building that would help out our programming and our staffing. We already own the property, so funding is a new issue, obviously now in this day and age. So it would help out in that respect as well.
Thanks, Patrick. Nick, anything else you wanted us to address, please let me know. I, I, that covered my notes.
All right. I guess the, the only other thing I have noted here was, I think Dan commented that there's, there's already not enough parking on site. And so there's a lot of parking on the surrounding streets. And that adding another use on the site is going to increase the amount of parking happening on the, the streets. Do you want to, anybody want to comment about that?
Um, sure. Or, or go ahead.
I'll go ahead.
Well, it's my understanding that the, the increased parking area will exceed the additional use of, of, of the building. So it's an effort to help that situation. The, the, the residents don't traditionally drive, so they don't have cars. The administrative staff would be added. But again, i- i- it's far less than the increased number of parking spaces. And the, one of the purposes was to alleviate that off park, off-street parking issue. If I'm wrong about that, somebody let me know.
No, that's actually what I was going to say as well. We're, we're trying to remedy that issue. I've, I've spoken with Mr. Grassi at length many times about that. And while it's a public street and anybody can park on it, I understand this is earned. And so we have been, we've been looking at that and this actually would, would take care of that issue. If those folks that are on that street would move into our parking lot. The people that are in the parking lot now would move up to the other parking lot. So the, the cars that were on Fairview and Merritt would be considerably left if not all removed.
Okay. All right. I guess the last question that kind of has come up a couple of times is emergency vehicles. Would, would emergency vehicles be encouraged or be dropping off if they were to come? Would they be dropping off in the new parking lot or is the new parking lot strictly for cars?
Well, first of all, the patient would never, would not be being brought to us by an ambulance. If an ambulance was required for a patient in the community right now, they would be going to a hospital. The people that leave our building in a, in an ambulance are experiencing medical issues, a, a variety of things. They have nothing to do with, with why they're, or not that they're not a direct result, but they're like physical issues of why they, they come up here with an ambulance to take somebody. They might not be feeling good. Their, their heart might be racing a little bit. Fear of a heart attack, something like that. It's not, it's not likely that the reasons. We haven't had something like that in, in years and years that I can remember. So no, nobody would be just being dropped off in that parking lot in an ambulance, nor would they be picked up in an ambulance by that parking lot.
Okay. All right. So emergency vehicles going back through the neighborhood is probably not going to be needed because nobody would be getting loaded in or getting dropped off from an emergency vehicle in the new parking lot.
That would be rare.
Okay.
It would be very rare.
Okay. All right. So that was one of the staff comments to just verify. All right. Well, I think that covers everything that everyone brought up in the public hearing. Any of the planning commission members have any questions or comments?
No, I think everything's been addressed, Nick.
All right. All right. So we've got, I think we've got two things to keep in mind. So we're doing a seeker review, which would be the environmental impacts potentially caused by the project. And then there's also site plan review. So I guess keep that in mind when we're going through the motions here. All right. So we've already, at the last meeting, we determined that it was a secret unlisted action and that the planning commission was going to be the lead agency. So if nobody else has any other comments or questions, I'm going to make a motion for a, I'm sorry, I do see that Mr. Maza has his hand raised. Unfortunately, so based on the rules of the planning commission review process, the only time that we take the public comment is during the, the public hearing portion of the meeting, which is over and closed, so we won't open it back up. These meetings are not a dialogue between the residents or come people calling in and the applicant, but, but we do appreciate your comments from when they were made. All right. So I'm going to make a motion that the, for a negative declaration under seeker based on the following items. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No or small impact? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Anybody want to talk about that before I label that as a no or small impact?
Tito, can you scroll down the staff report till we can see the, the review?
You see it? Do, do you see this?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Tito, can you, or Brian, just remind me, so if we decided that one of these items was a moderate to large impact, what is, what are the consequences of that?
If you think that there's a moderate to large impact, but that that impact is, is addressed by something that the applicant is doing, then you would complete a part three and, and justify why you're issuing a negative declaration in spite of that moderate to large impact. If you think that there are enough large impacts that there will be a significant environmental, adverse environmental impact as a result of this project, then you would issue a positive declaration under seeker.
And just remind me so that in full disclosure, so we're being very transparent. If if environmentally we don't necessarily find that the project would have an adverse impact, but in terms of the character of the neighborhood being changed by this action, is that a seeker question? Is that a seeker impact or is that a site plan impact?
I think what I would do is I point to the third question you're going to answer on that sheet. Is proposed action impair the quality or quality, the character or quality of the existing community? And that's sort of what you're talking about is the impact. So it's a pretty rare circumstance where the seeker goes one way and the ultimate decision goes the opposite direction.
Okay.
Nick, I can just add to that. For the purpose of seeker, to say that there's a large impact, it would have to be a very large impact. But at the same time, outside of seeker, I don't know if you can see what I'm highlighting here. You do have these standards for site plan review.
Yeah.
That, and these are, these are criteria that.
Green, your screen just went blank.
It did.
At least on my computer did.
I can still see it. Yeah.
So these, these are the 10 criteria that you want to be looking at. And then compatibility, compatibility with general character of neighborhood is one of those things. So you can issue a negative declaration under seeker, but still take issue with one of the items from, one or more of the items from the site plan review.
Okay. And if we, if we did determine that there was a moderate to large impact under seeker, does the, does the applicant get the chance to respond to that in, in writing? Or how does, how do they respond?
We haven't had a positive declaration in a very long time, but there is a process where they would have to basically demonstrate to the commission that, that there will not be a negative impact and that they will be mitigating those impacts.
Okay.
You want, they would have to draft an impact statement to show that any potential environmental impacts are being mitigated.
Okay. All right. Well, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to make a motion for a negative declaration under seeker and see how that goes with the, with all of the planning commission members. All right. So a motion.
I would ask that you go through and address the categories here though individually before you do that.
Okay. Can I do them as I'm going through them?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So make a motion for a negative declaration under seeker. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No or small impact? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? So I'd say that's a moderate impact, but in my opinion, what they're doing is not so large that for under seeker, I would say that it was something that had gone way above and beyond what the site could absorb for use of land. Anybody else want to comment on that? Is that okay?
I'll agree with that, Nick.
Okay. All right. No other comments? And just to clarify, Brian or Tito, we can still do a negative declaration even if we have a moderate impact? As long as we discussed it?
Yeah, as long as you sort of spell it out in the part three, why, why you think in spite of that moderate impact that overall there's not a significant impact.
Okay. All right. Three's the top one. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? So again, I'd say that's a moderate impact. But with the revised site plan, the applicant has done their best to shift the building away from the road to buffer the, buffer the building and the parking lot from the residents around the property. And so so though it is still a moderate impact, I would not say it's enough to kick us into a positive declaration for seeker. Anybody else want to comment on that? Or add anything to that?
I agree.
All right. All right. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics to cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkways? So say it's a small impact. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No or small impact? Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No or small impact? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to the natural resources? For example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna? No or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No or small impact? And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No or small impact? So based on all of those, I'll make a motion for a negative declaration under seeker. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Seconded by Paul. So Paul in favor? Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe?
Us.
And me?
Yeah.
All right. And also yes for a negative declaration under seeker. So that's five in favor, zero opposed. All right. So the next thing would be the determination for the site plan review. I'm not going to make a motion for this. Somebody else will have to do it because I'm, I'm not in favor of what the proposed plan or how it's been laid out on the site. I think the density, I was just looking back at the air photos that are on Google from starting back in like 2010. I think if this project had all been presented at one time with the, the two different buildings that were added to the site, the women's center and then this one as well. If it had all been presented at one, as one project, I would have said back then that it was too, too congested. It's too much for that neighborhood to handle. And so I think the density of the proposed use on the site is, it's, it's met its threshold, I think, with the last building that was proposed. So I'm not, I, I'm going to vote no for the site plan review on the project. And somebody else will have to make the motion to move forward with a site plan, site plan review motion if they want to do that. All right. So does anybody want to make a motion about the site plan for approval? Uh, Brian, is it okay to make a motion for? Uh, Brian, is it okay to make a motion for denial of the site plan review or against site plan review?
If that's what you wish to do, yes, you can make that type of motion.
All right. Um, it's, I guess it's a little easier if anybody wants to make the motion for approval because then it's a yes or no that aligns with that. Approval? It, does anybody want to make a motion for approval of the site plan?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay, all right. So Manny's made a motion for approval. Is there a second?
If there's no second, the motion fails.
All right, so that motion is going to fail. All right, so then
Just ask again if there's a second.
All right, is there a second to Manny's motion for approval?
I'll second it to bring it to a vote.
Okay, perfect, uh, seconded by Joe. All right, so all in favor? Uh, Mario?
No.
Paul?
No.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, Manny?
Yes.
All right, and I am a no. All right, so that's two in favor, three against. So Brian, what does that mean?
The motion is not approved.
It fails.
It fails.
All right, does that formally mean the site plan review has not been approved?
We have approved, but it also means it does not mean that it's been denied.
Okay.
Do we do we have an opportunity to be reheard on this when there's a full board present?
Um, yes, but you do understand or, or just sort of remind you that last month, one of the members had to recuse himself because of where he lives approximately the project.
Was that the absent member?
Uh, there's one other absent men, member.
Okay.
Members, one of them, one of them is a recusal.
We'd at least like to get, let's see, what will that give me? That gives me three to three.
It could give you three to three or it could give you four to two.
In opposition?
Yes.
Well, can we at least
If you want to ask for a motion to table, we could always table to next month to allow it to be the other member to, to participate.
Yeah, I'd like to make that request.
Tito, can we make sure to get the transcript to the uh, member who's absent?
Yes, we can.
All right, so that, that's assuming everyone's okay with that request. Um, is anybody opposed to tabling the project till next meeting?
Are you within motion then a vote to table?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm just checking before we make a motion if, if everyone's gonna say no, they wanna keep moving forward then. Well, listen
The reason why I would recommend tabling it is that a failure to act is not a denial. And there is some indication that a failure to act can be deemed or in a timely manner could act as an approval. That's why I believe that it's in your best interest as a board to have it heard by the entire board that can hear it and then make a motion.
Okay, all right. Brian is uh, subtly directing us to uh, your request.
Brian, I'm sorry, I have a quick procedural question. Brian, can they not now make a motion to deny because uh, because of the previous motion with two members voting to approve? They would not now be able to get a majority and a deny? Well, they can make the motion to, to deny, but I'm not certain that it would get the votes to be in a constitution action either. Because either way, you need four votes.
Right, uh, my question is basically can, can one of the previous yeses switch to no? No.
It could. I would prefer for purposes of the record uh, to be an explanation about what switched the vote.
Right.
So I believe it's cleaner to, to table and then allow
Okay, all right. Um, I'll make a motion to table the project um, for reconsideration at the next meeting when uh, potentially uh, hopefully everybody will be available. Uh, is there a second for that?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Paul. Uh, all in favor, Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe?
Us.
And Manny?
Yeah.
All right, I'm also a yes, so that's five in favor, zero opposed. All right, so we're gonna table the final decision on the site plan until the next meeting.
Have you looked at the, uh, have you looked at the comment on, in chat? Does anybody want to respond to that?
Um, so the public hearing is closed, so we don't have to uh, we're not required to redo the legal notice.
Well, I, I got the impression this was put up here before we even decided to table this. I'm, I'm under the impression this person is saying that they did, they were not notified of today's meeting.
Oh, uh.
Yeah, that is, they said correct. They weren't, there, this person is saying they were not, they did not know about the meeting today.
Uh, that that person uh, actually submitted comments and and is aware of the meeting. Um, not sure what to say about that, other than that we did leak, you know, we did public noticing. Um, and the date of this meeting was announced on the record at the last meeting. And the person saying that um, they weren't aware who was made aware at some point because they're present.
I think they, I think it looks like they're aware, but their, their, their concern was other residents were not aware. But I agree, if, if you posted
It was properly posted for the first meeting. It was properly posted for the first meeting, which was extended out to today's date at the last meeting, which is proper. And then it's extended out one more time. It doesn't have to be publicly noticed for ea- each subsequent meeting.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think we're, I think we're good. I just wanted to make sure somebody saw that comment.
Yes, so what I'll say is that um, be, be uh, after the last meeting, everyone that had submitted comments for the first public hearing, I reached out to them via email um, and updated them on everything. So I'll do that again and I'll do the same for Ms. Hutchings now that I have her, her email address.
Okay. Uh, Tito, when, what is the date of the next meeting?
The next meeting uh, tentatively is August fifteenth. Assuming we can get a quorum for that day from you all.
Okay, so August fifteenth. All right. Well. I think that covers that. We'll uh, we'll see you back in August.
Thank you very much.
One, one procedural thing. Uh, if the site plan changes at all, uh, Brian or Tito, do we have to redo the public hearing again?
I, I believe you, so yes, um, we would have to reopen the public hearing because it, the nature of the project has changed.
Okay, so just so the applicant knows that if
I would encourage that if there's any further significant changes, it needs to be, the public needs to be an opportunity, given an opportunity to address those changes.
All right. Perfect, all right. So uh, unless the, and if the plans don't change, then the public hearing is still closed. It would just be a continuation of the site plan review portion of the project. All right, but uh, people from the public are still welcome to uh, to log in and listen to how that goes, so. All right, well, thank you. Uh, we'll see you back in August.
Thank you.
Right. All right, so that concludes public hearings. Um. Just as a summary for that last project for, I know there's people on listening. Um, so the project was not approved. Um, it was not uh, it was not denied full out. Uh, the applicant requested a tabling until the next meeting where it'll be reviewed again. In theory, with all planning commission members present to get a full load on the
Just for clarity, except for the one who recused himself.
Yes, that's right, except for one person who can't. All right, so that concludes uh, public hearings tonight. So the uh, next item on the agenda is other business. Uh, anybody have any other business?
Uh, yes, we've hired a new planner. His name is Shaolin Patel. Um, he's doing a good job so far, hence the meeting minutes actually being done for once, so. Shaolin's not here uh, because he started part-time, but um, he will, you will probably see him at the next meeting.
All right. Well, that's great.
Any chance that meeting is going to be in person?
Uh, it may be. Um, as of right now, the, the state of emergency was extended until July fifteenth. So it's possible that this is the last Zoom meeting. But we won't know yet until around the fifteenth again, whether they extended it or not.
Okay, understood.
I can tell you that there's been talk about an up, slight uptick in Corona stuff around the state. So I would not be surprised that that's sort of uh, a precursor of an extension.
Can I ask a quick question? This is Greg. If we do go to live, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
If we do go to live, wouldn't we have to re-notice so that people know that they have to come in person as opposed to being on Zoom at that point? I don't know, I'm just asking so that
There may be an option that allows them to participate in Zoom even though we are in person.
Okay, I'm just curious.
But eventually, yes, that'll, this will be phased out and they would go back to being in-person meetings. And the, the agenda that's posted on the calendar would s- would state the location of the meeting.
Okay.
So people will know it's in, it's in council chambers.
Okay.
All right. Fantastic. Um, well. Anybody else, anything else?
I have nothing further.
All right, um, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Nick, all in favor, just say yes.
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 Uh, just for the record, uh, for the purposes of taking minutes later, uh, Joe D'Angelo left a little early so that, that was a four zero vote.
All right.
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. We'll see you back in August.
See you next month.
Thanks.
See you soon. Have a good day, everybody.